Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Norwood Planning Board Meeting Agenda for September 28th, 2020. Accept, yam. Meeting. So, to each and every person participating, they are where they are. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 14th, 2020, meeting. Anybody have any questions in regard to those minutes? Having heard none, you get a motion to accept the minutes as filed. And a second. Mr. Bamber, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Second, 705, the approval not required plan for 600 Nickel Street, assesses map 11, sheet 2F, lot 1, Paul Easey, applicant David Hearn, attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, David Hearn Jr. on behalf of Paul Easey with respect to the request for the board's endorsement of an approval not required plan at 600 Nickel Street. Just to give you a little history on this, last December, you were given and signed off on a plan for this property. It has changed somewhat. And so the plan that's before you is the latest iteration, and we believe the final iteration of the division of this property into several lots. There was a last minute note made about a greenhouse that is to be removed because it is very, is pretty much at the lot line on lot 2A. But, and the line between lots 4 and 5 is really where the changes have occurred since last December. I believe everything's in order for the board to approve this and to sign the plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Halkeotis, have we had time to review the plan?
Good evening. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pat and I both reviewed the plan and the applicant's engineer did make a change to the plan, adding a note regarding the greenhouse that says that that's to be removed. That would, in effect, create a zoning violation. So that's going to go. I want to note that the plan shows the right-of-ways of Nickel Street and Brook Street. It does not actually show where the road is within the right-of-way. And while this is not directly connected to the planning board's action on the approval of our required plan, I'm going to note that the width of Brook Street in front of lot 5 is very wide. And as a result, the distance between the edge of the pavement and the applicant's property line is like 50 feet or so. We checked with David DeLuca and asked whether or not there would be any requirement for an easement to get from the edge of Brook Street to the property across that 50-foot-wide right-of-way. And he did indicate that an easement should be required. And that's something that, because it's townhouse land, may require a town meeting vote. But that's not directly connected to the approval of our required plan. We did review the plan and it does comply with the requirements for an A and R plan. And I would recommend that the board vote to endorse the plan.
Thank you, Paul. Anything further? Ask the emotion to endorse the A and R, please. Mr. Sheen.
To whom?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unposed? Unanimous. Want to roll? Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Tahachi?
Aye.
Mr. Petkowski?
Aye.
The chairman is an aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Halkeotis and Mr. Deshane. I'll be in touch about picking up the signed plan when it's ready. Thank you.
Good night.
705, site plan review. Of Cap World Site, 596 Boston Providence Highway, David Spiegel, applicant Matthew Smith, Norwood Engineering. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Matt Smith. I'm an engineer with Norwood Engineering Company. With me also is Rich Hughes from my office. Rich, if you could put up sheet 2 of our site plan, please. So what we're asking is for approval. This is the Cap World Site on Route 1. Years ago, it was Mr. Tux, I think. And right now, it has the Cap World property. It is actually on the on-ramp to Route 1. When you come off the circle, if you look to the right, is it coming down the on-ramp? That's where the site is. Right now, there's a few buildings on there. Maybe three or four buildings have been built over the years. We're proposing to knock all them down and build a new project. So, Rich, if you could show us sheet 3 of that set. And we're proposing a commercial building on the site. The use will be car sales and car leasing. We have been to the zoning board of appeals and obtained special permits for that. We're seeking site plan approval from this planning board. The building itself will be a little bit less than 7,000 square feet, located pretty much in the middle of the site where Rich is showing. There's associated parking surrounding the building. There's like a circular motion of the vehicles around the building. I want the board to know that adjacent to this site is Napontet Street, where the end of Napontet Street used to go all the way through across Route 1, but now it is a cul-de-sac. And we will not be accessing this site from Napontet Street at all. There'll be no access for utilities from Napontet Street. We're going to leave the Napontet Street neighborhood alone. The access to the site, Rich, if you could go to sheet 1, please? The access to the site will be two ways. First, it will be through the adjacent Launch property where people will come down a ramp from Route 1, use the existing driveway when people are going to launch, and then they'll drive through the parking lot to the site and into a driveway kind of near Route 1. And then also, there's access which exists now, which is from Access Road. There's a driveway that allows people to come from Access Road up into the site. So the people will be able to either come off of Route 1 ramp, on-ramp, or off of Access Road. Again, there'll be no, there'll be no access through Napontet Street at all. In fact, there's a fence separating the property between us and the neighborhood. At the ZBA, we committed to rebuild an eight-foot fence all the way along the property line to shield the neighbors. Rich, if you could show the landscape plan, if you could get that up. And while he's doing that, I'll say that we have, we met with the, all the town department heads. I believe we have addressed all of their comments. The drainage for the site has been designed to mass stormwater, where we're detaining all of the flow, treating all the flow and infiltrating the flow in accordance to the drain regulations. We've been, we've had a review by Mark Ryan, except for some construction details, which we've added to the plan. He has said that he has, he's agreeable with the plan. We've shown a landscape plan here that was done for us by K.D. Turner. There's quite a few plants and shrubs along the Route 1 side of the property. As you can see, we have included a lot of interior landscaping on there. So it's going to be a site that currently is virtually 100% paved and building. And we're going to put some green space in there in accordance with the zoning. Rich, if you could, I'm going to wrap up my comments very briefly and open up to questions. And the last thing I'd like to show is the elevation of the building. Jack Perry's office did some elevations of the building. As you can see, we do have a, we show it as enterprise car sales. That is the tenant, the proposed tenant for the property. And that is the building, the one with the building that you can see some green on it. That is going to be the side that's going to be facing Route 1. And then, you can see the two sides that have some windows. And then the one at the bottom, that's the one that's not going to be facing Route 1. That's the side that will be facing away from Route 1. So actually, at this point in time, I think I'd like to open it up to questions. I think it's a better dialogue when people have a chance to answer specific questions. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone from the board have a question at this time? Would you like to throw out? Mr. Petkowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, are you asking for any waivers on parking spaces or anything like that? That's number one. And number two, that long driveway that gets you into the property, it's kind of, there's an island that makes you go down and come back up the long driveway. Is that part of the property? I wasn't sure. Or is that a right-of-way for you to get into the property? And there's no cut-through from Launch's parking lot. You got to kind of go all the way down to Access Road and swing, make the U-turn. So is that driveway yours or is that just a right-of-way? And then the other one, is there any waivers?
Sure. There's no waivers. The plan does conform to parking, parking count. The, in order to get up that Access Road, you do have to go over a right-of-way that is owned by the owner of Launch property. Launch is owned by Access Road LLC. Cap World is owned by Irene Realty Trust. Both of those entities are controlled by the legal. So he will control both properties. But ever, for a very, very long time, that accessway has gone over another person's property. So that's been existing for many years. So yes, you will have to go from Access Road to get through. But I also want to show, I want Rich to point out the route that you will be able to. Right now, you can't get to that site from the Route 1 ramp. But if, Rich, if you could bring your cursor along the way of cars, that's right. They go through, and then through the Launch parking lot. And then they will be able to access up and near Route 1 where his cursor is. So there'll be two ways to access. And right now, you're right.
That's, I'm sorry, Matt. That's a new entrance.
It is. It is. Years ago, you could access that way. It was blocked off and we had a lot of cars that would go along, right in front of the Launch property. And that was not totally favorable. So we changed it so they do have to make that U-turn and go back, have the traffic kind of move away from the Launch, the people that are on the sidewalk in Launch. So please let me know if I missed any of the questions. If there's anything else I can follow up on.
No, that was it for me, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, this is Hal Burrow. I see the way the building on the Napontet Street swings around the building. It's like an open bay. We're not coming back and applying for a drive-through, are we?
No, no, sir. That is a detailing bay where they will clean up the cars that are getting ready to be sold. That's not a drive-through. That's an auto detailing bay. So when we went to the ZBA, we did get a special requirement for repair, but it was a technicality. They only want to do auto detailing. But that's an auto detailing bay. And that will just be people that work there will bring the cars in there that can be cleaned up before the people pick up the cars.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions from the board? Is there anybody public that has a question? I'm sorry, Mr. Hatch.
It may be a little premature, but I was just curious if there's any idea, this is going to be a dealership. How many cars will they keep on-site in inventory? Is there any notion of what that number would be?
Yes, yes, sir. I have it. There is, the Cap World property will have 28 parking spaces and 65 storage spaces for a total of 93. There's one thing that I want to call to your attention that I didn't show you. Rich, I think if you could show me sheet 3. There is, we are proposing an easement where some of the parking spaces for the Cap World property will be on the Launch property. There's an easement. Rich will pan up and show you where that easement is within that dashed line. Now, having said that we're proposing an easement, the Launch site will have enough parking spaces to conform with zoning. So even though we're going to allocate some spaces for the easement, the Launch parking space, the Launch site, there's 121, scratch that, 191 parking spaces required. And there will be 212 provided. So even though we are going to use some of the parking on the Launch lot for Cap World, there will be parking in conformance with zoning for Launch. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public? Okay. Now. The proposed easement. That is on the plan, correct now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And as you know, that's permanent? Goes with the land?
It will go with the land and it will go with your permit. It, that will be, we will have to abide by that because of the, it will go, the easement will go with the land and it will be in addition to your permit or out of your permit documents.
Mr. Halkeotis, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
We asked about the easement during our department head review meeting. And if this was an easement between two different private parties, I would have had some concerns because easements are not necessarily permanent. They can be extinguished. But in this case, Mr. Spiegel has ownership rights, is owner of both of the properties. And so he's proposing to grant an easement from one of his entities to another entity. And I think that's okay. So I had never really seen an easement like this using land from another parking lot to satisfy the zoning parking requirements for an adjacent property. But given this particular instance that Mr. Spiegel is owner of both of those properties, I thought that the easement was okay. We did have a department head review meeting and we provided some comments to the applicant. And they've revised the plan and have addressed those comments. We received the revised plans. I received mine this afternoon in the mail and Pat received revised plans on Friday. I have not had a chance to go over those revisions. I think everything has been taken care of, but I need to just kind of verify that. I'd like to see if Pat's got anything that he'd like to add to that.
Yeah, I would, I have two kind of minor questions. Matt, the stockade fence, is that a wooden stockade or PVC? I didn't see anywhere.
It hasn't been determined yet. There was an agreement at the ZBA that David, my client, would meet with the abutters and he is agreeable to make it anything that they want. I think this plan says stockade fence, but there is a condition of the CBA special permit that says that David shall meet with the neighbors and come up with a consensus and build whatever fence they would like.
Okay. Would that be noted on the final plan?
We can. I don't know if that determination has been made. Maybe a thought would be that we, that the final type of construction of the fence could be forwarded to you later after we come to an agreement with the Neighborhood Association. I think we want to, we really don't want to propose something. It was really a hard agreement, that solid agreement that we would agree with whatever the neighbors want. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. And could you explain the lower lot? I believe kind of on the lower left-hand side, there's that 23 spaces. I just want to kind of clarify what that is exactly.
Yep. Yep. Thank you very much. I should have talked about that a little bit. That is a proposed future parking lot. We would like to, in the future, come back and get a permit from you for that lot. But that lot is on the Launch property. It's not on the Cap World property. It's not owned by the Cap World entity. But we put this plan together to let everybody know what we intend to do. About a year and a half ago, I went to the Concom to try to get approval for that. And the Concom said they didn't want us to proceed until we had a overall plan so everybody could see what's going to happen there. So what you will see in the future is another site plan application requesting for that to be built. But again, that is on a different lot, so you're not voting on that now. And again, without counting those 23 spaces, the plan that you have in front of you, the Launch building, has enough parking to conform with zoning. Okay.
Mr. Smith, who guys own that lot?
That's David Spiegel as Access Road LLC. That's all one, that's all, that little parking lot is part of the whole Launch lot that has four and a half acres.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I hadn't realized that this was not part of the site plan that they're requesting approval for. Matt, is there any notation on the plan that states what you just said, that this is not part of this particular application?
It's not, but I think it could go in the record that it's not. And because it's, the application is for the Cap World property, which is Irene Realty Trust, and that's who you'll be permitting. So anything that happens on the Launch property, the Access Road LLC property could not be binding to anything, anything that's part of this. But it would have been, I should have put a note on there. That would have been better, but that's where we stand right now.
All right. Well, I think we're going to have to address that by either removing, you know, the parking spaces. So it just, you know, looks like a vacant lot or placing a note above that that says this is not part of it. We could make a condition, a condition on the permit which states that the planning board approval does not include approval for that. But as it stands right now, it looks and smells like it's part of this application. And one way or the other, we need to clarify that it is not.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to revise the plan and show what you just asked for. I guess I would, if the board is comfortable with the project, I'd ask a vote with the condition that we come back to you with a revised site plan to, actually, it would make sense to not show that parking at all. Just show it as vacant land for now. And then when we come back, we'll show the parking.
Well, I just assume continue the meeting and get all the parts and pieces onto the plan and we'll vote at that point. Mr. Petkowski, you had your hand, I'm sorry, I missed.
Yeah, that's, yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Paul said. I think the easiest thing to do is just to eliminate it from the plan. You know, it's not part of this plan. You know, when it's being proposed to be built, it'll get added to a new plan. So I would just take it off the plan. And then there's no question, well, what's this down here, kind of thing.
That's, we're agreeable to that.
Okay. Anyone? Actually, yes, Mr. Sheen.
I'm also agreeable to that.
Thank you. But I'm going to use a motion to continue tonight's meeting regarding this. I get a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue until 7:05 of our next meeting, Pat, which is...
So our next meeting is technically October 19th. That's the meeting we're planning on having a few public hearings on, starting at 10, I mean, starting at 7:15. So 7:05 can work. I think we do also have another agenda item to schedule a second October meeting. I don't know if, Paul, would you recommend working in for that second October meeting or going with October 19th at 7:05?
So for the board, as it currently stands, we just have a meeting scheduled for October 19th, in the month of October. Pat and I discussed this and we feel that it's going to be necessary for the board to hold a second meeting in October because we're, it'll be right before town meeting and we're going to be getting ready for a number of zoning articles. So on the 19th, we do have pretty much a full agenda and, but this doesn't look like it's going to take much time. So I think that Mr. Petkowski could make a motion to approve, to continue the hearing until the 19th of October at 7:05. And then we can handle those other hearings after that.
Yes, that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman. This won't take long at all. I think once we get the revised plan, Paul gets a chance to look at it. I think we're all there except for that. So I'll make a motion to continue to October 19th, 7:05.
Thank you, Mr. Petkowski. Mr. Sheen?
I'll second that.
That's perfect. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Want to roll? Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Hatch? Turn your mic on.
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
And Mr. Petkowski?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Five zero.
Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. While we have Mr. Smith here, I just, is it okay to ask him a question on another project? It's just more of a heads-up kind of thing. It has to do with another parking lot where they're parking cars. A year ago, we gave them, we allowed it to go on and be extended for another year. With, and we had put a lot of conditions on. We thought we would have heard something starting earlier this year regarding their plans for that property. We haven't heard anything yet. And it was one of Mr. Spiegel's properties. And I was just wondering if we have anything on that at all.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Sheen. I think you're talking about the Carnegie Road property. We had talked about doing some landscaping in front to make the thing... the thing look a little bit better. Uh, you are right. Uh, I haven't delivered that as we, uh, discussed. We, we, we're very close, and we feel we are very close to having a tenant to put a building on that, uh, site, but I know you've heard that all before. Why don't I suggest this? I will, I will get a landscape plan to you, uh, very quickly that we can talk about, um, at, hopefully at the next meeting. And it's been, it's been something that I know it's, uh, fine. Uh, it's something that we should have done, uh, but we didn't. And, uh, it's been kind of a crazy year. I think that spelt through the cracks a little bit. Um, it's, it, it shouldn't have happened. Uh, since it did happen, I'm one of the, I'm most responsible for that. But, uh, that's what's happening. I know we have done some, uh, concept plans to try to get a, a building on there. I had hoped that we would be back to you with a building design. That didn't happen. Uh, but to move the thing forward, I will, uh, get a landscape plan to you, uh, very quickly.
Well, do you know when that, the actual date is? Is it, is, is it in December? When this runs out?
Since December.
Yes, the, um, the, the permit, the special permit has, has been extended a few times, and, um, it's usually, uh, right before, um, the holidays, mid, mid-December. Uh, I think the last approval the board made was maybe for two years, but that was, uh, contingent upon getting the landscaping plan. Does that sound right to you, Matt?
Yes, that's what we, that's what we talked about.
Okay, so, you know, it's a couple of months away, and so I'm glad that you brought it up, and, and hopefully we can address it prior to December.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen.
Okay. Paul, you want to move on with the planning board business?
Mr. Chairman, we, um, we have a town meeting article discussion, but we also have, um, Mackie is here for the discussion on, um, finalizing the Big Y, uh, site plan approvals. So I'm gonna suggest that the board, um, take up, uh, the Big Y decision next, and then we can handle the, uh, the town meeting articles and other board business after that.
What, Mr. Mackie?
So, uh, Pat, Pat and I, uh, worked on, uh, decision, and, um, we provided a copy of the decision to Attorney Mackie, uh, so that there were no surprises with the conditions of approval. And, um, I believe Attorney Mackie reviewed it. I think that we are, uh, in good shape to, uh, have the board vote on this. We'd be glad to answer any questions that the board members have regarding the decision or any of the conditions.
Mr. Mackie, are you there?
Doesn't look like it.
Do the board members have any questions about the draft decision or the conditions?
Well, this is something additional from what we had originally talked about. The only thing I was curious about was the, uh, the guardrail. They brought out some suggestions to get the more rustic looking, but, you know, haven't heard back from them in that, have you, Pat?
Not on the guardrail. Um, Paul, I know, you know, discussion with Phil, there was a, some, um, concern with condition 10 in terms of keeping the site plan on site, and that if there might be architectural changes. I don't know if that's something we just kind of, is what it is, or do we maybe ask for an as-built with a, with a, with a final, um, completed site?
So, condition 10 is a standard condition that goes with all, uh, site plan approval. It says all construction shall be done in accordance with the approved record plans and documents. No deviation from the approved site plan shall be permitted without the approval of the planning board. As I said, that, that's part of all decisions. What, uh, what does happen fairly often is that during, um, construction, there needs to be some minor changes in the field. And oftentimes, um, I'll be approached by, uh, the contractor or the, the owner requesting that, um, they make some minor changes. As the board knows, the plan, uh, the site plan review rules and regulations do, uh, authorize me to approve minor changes to approved site plans. And so, um, I've done that pretty carefully over the years, and if there's a question about something, you know, that I should or shouldn't approve, um, I usually discuss that with the chairman, and, and we make a decision together on, um, whether that change should be approved. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm confident with that condition that we should leave that in place, and there is a little bit of wiggle room in case there are some conditions that, um, come up during construction that weren't anticipated during the planning phase.
Thank you.
Yep. Paul, if I may, this is Phil. That, that is absolutely fine. Um, we've just got out-of-state folks who read the conditions verbatim and wanted to make sure that what you had just explained is what I told them, but it's not exactly how it's written, and they were wanting, in the overabundance of caution, me to ask. And, uh, so I, I think what you just said and, and what they were concerned with is, uh, right on track. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes? Mr. Bamber?
Just looking at this condition number three, um, no deliveries are allowed between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. I'm not sure if I remember it being that late, 10:00 PM.
It was 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
That's what I thought.
And that's what the sign that's posted in the back of the building is.
Is, is that what the sign says?
Yes.
Okay. I can make that change if, if that's what has been the status quo. It wasn't my intent to change that. It just, I wanted to make sure that during the nighttime hours that, uh, there was no noise. And I also included a condition that Mr. Patrickowski recommended, that if their trucks are, arrive early before 7:00 AM, that they, they can't, you know, idle or park in back of the building where they might cause noise or disruption to the neighborhood, that they, um, they park their trucks out in the middle of the main parking lot where they're further away from any neighbors that, uh, that could be impacted from any noise.
Perfect.
So we can make that change to condition number three. Subject to that change, I'd recommend the board take a vote to approve, uh, the site plan decision.
You need a motion?
Motion to approve. With conditions? Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Unanimous. A roll call. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Mr. Patrickowski?
Aye.
And Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
And the chairman says aye, five zero.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is, um, discussion of town meeting, official town meeting, November 12th, and potential zoning articles. We have 10 proposed zoning amendments, and the large number is attributed to the fact that this is really a year and a half's worth of, uh, uh, effort instead of just one year. As you know, the, the annual town meeting was, um, the zoning articles were postponed, and so we've had more time to, uh, add to the list of things that we would like to change in the zoning bylaw. What Pat and I would like to do now is to just kind of give you, um, a brief run-through of each article and, uh, answer any questions. And, um, at this point, uh, if the board's interested in going forward, those articles, we'll, we'll focus in those, on those in more detail. Right now, we have, uh, public hearings scheduled for October 19th for each of these 10 zoning amendments. Um, and Pat and I worked on the public hearing notices today and submitted them to the Norwood Record to get them in on time, um, for those hearings. I will start with, uh, at the top of the list on the screen, um, body art. We had been approached over the last few years by a few different people that were interested in, um, microblading, which is a, a form of body art. Our zoning bylaw did not, um, allow for that, and we currently only allowed for, uh, tattoo shops in the Highway Business District, which is, um, on Route 1. What we're proposing to do is to allow for, uh, body art establishments in the general business zone and the limited business zone. And, um, what we'll probably do here is, this table is based on the current zoning. But, uh, the, uh, creation of the new, uh, Boston Providence Highway District, the Route 1 zoning, will create a, uh, a different named district from Highway Business. It'll be, um, BPH, Boston Providence Highway District. So what you see across the top here, uh, the, the row of, uh, zoning districts, we'll change this article and eliminate HB, we'll change that with, uh, the Boston Providence Highway District, and then, uh, that you can continue to be allowed in that district. The other district that, that we will also allow this is in the manufacturing district. This was, uh, this article with the request of Tony Mizuko that we include some, some different areas. I'll have to tell you that there is, um, a difference of opinion about, uh, the districts where it would be allowed. Mr. Mizuko had suggested that we include, um, the downtown central business district in those districts. I'd had conversations with the police chief and the building commissioner, and there seemed to be a consensus among the three of us that allowing this use in other districts would be acceptable, but we would prefer not to allow the use in the central business district downtown. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have on this article.
Sorry?
Oh, thank, uh, Pat. Uh, Paul, uh, on, I, I have a couple of questions on that. I agree, one that, uh, to keep it out of the downtown business district, I fully agree with that. Is there, and when I printed this, uh, I didn't see a footnote or anything. Will, will we have in the definition, uh, will we add a definition to body art, uh, so we, um, really kind of spell out? I mean, I, I really don't know, other than tattoos, what body art is. Uh, will we really define it maybe from help from Segal Reese, uh, director of, uh, health, uh, health, uh, director? But I, I really don't know body art, you know, and so will there be a definition that outlines exactly what is allowed and what isn't allowed? If, if there is, I missed it.
All right. Yeah, we'll take a look at the definition. Um, this came up in discussion a couple of weeks ago, uh, and, um, Tony Mizuko reminded me that, that the microblading was part of what, what was driving this. So I, I will look at the definition, consult with, uh, Segal Reese, and we will come back with, um, any changes that are needed to define that term, to make sure that it includes, um, the various types of body art, um, piercing, tattoos, microblading, that kind of stuff. Pat just brought up a definition.
Let me see. I have body art establishment and then body art. So this is in the definition section of the zoning bylaws. I'll just read it out. So body art is the practice of physical adornment by permitted establishments and practitioners using, but not limited to, the following techniques: body piercing, tattooing, cosmetic tattooing, uh, branding, and sacrification. But, uh, this definition does not include practices that are considered medical procedures by the Board of Registration and Medicine in the Commonwealth, such as implants under the skin, which shouldn't, which shall not be performed in a body art establishment. Um, and then body art establishment is a specified place or premise that has been guaranteed a permit by the Norwood Board of Health, whether public or private, where the practice of body art is performed. So basically, body test, uh, body piercing, tattooing, cosmetic tattooing, which is technically, I guess, what microblading is, um, and branding and sacrification, with whatever that is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, that's scarification, not sacrification. We do not sanction any human sacrifices here in Norwood.
I can read.
Thank you, Paul. I, I didn't have my, uh, book with me when I printed this at work. So I didn't see.
I was thrown off by the branding. I didn't know that was a thing.
But, and nevertheless, I didn't see, I did not see microblading specifically, uh, mentioned there. And so I will talk to Segal about that, and, um, if she feels that this definition needs to, um, uh, incorporate that, to make that clear, um, we will work on that and get it to the board, um, the next time we discuss these articles.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just wanted to say I, I agree with, uh, Paul's decision and others to kind of keep that out of the downtown. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, uh, if there are no more questions on the body art, I'll go to the next item, drive-through windows?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, there, there are two proposed, um, changes here. We actually met with somebody that was interested in purchasing the former bank property that was located next to the Big Y in the Big Y Plaza. And, um, that person was interested in, in, um, rehabbing that building, which would also include, uh, using the existing drive-through window. It, after, uh, the building commissioner did some research, he determined that, that for some reason that was either built before, um, the drive-through special permit requirement, or it, uh, somehow slipped through the cracks and got built without a special permit for the drive-through. Uh, but during this discussion, what was discovered was that, um, we do not currently allow drive-through windows in the general business district at all. It's, it's not an allowed use. So the article that, that Pat's showing on the screen now shows in green, um, in the general business district, that, um, that would be a special permit issued by the planning board, just the way all the other, um, um, special permits for drive-through are in the other districts. And so that's the first proposed change related to drive-through windows. The second change that we're proposing actually came out of, uh, the case on the property, uh, where the Yankee Spirits is located, that we're currently involved with litigation. During our review of that plan, um, we observed that, that there was a long drive-through lane, 200-plus feet long, but there was no way to bail out, escape, uh, or get out of that lane once you've committed. once you've committed. And we thought that that was not a great design feature, that all drive-throughs should have an escape lane in case you change your mind and you can't stay for the full duration of time to get your service through a drive-through window. So what we're proposing is to require that all drive-throughs include an escape lane as part of their design. The article number seven that you see there, I'm going to tweak that a little bit and change that language, but basically it's going to say that all drive-throughs are required to be designed to include a bailout lane, an escape lane. And this was to address a previously recognized problem with our drive-through regulations. I'd be glad to answer any questions or accept comments on this change.
By any chance, Paul, there's no way to conceive, to expect that someone come in and state that as a pre-existing non-conforming use, would it?
So in that particular case, that building's been abandoned for more than two years, and so any kind of grandfather related to the use of the building will be gone, and if they wanted to use it for that purpose, they would probably need to come, they would need to come before the planning board for a special permit for the drive-through.
Thank you.
Any concerns about the allowing it in general business? Is that okay, Mr. Pachakowski?
Thanks, Paul, again. No, no concerns. The McDonald's uptown, is that, I don't think that's in the central business, right? Isn't that, is that in the central business district? Is it allowed there?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, and so I agree. I think the, having the bailout lane is really the only way to go. I really, as I go through these drive-throughs now, because of you can't go in restaurants, and I go to a lot more drive-throughs, I've really taken notice to see if they have bailout lanes and things like that, and I agree that that should be in there. I do have two quick questions, Paul, as I was reviewing, reading the requirements on drive-throughs which are existing, and you can just clear them up. 7.3.2 requirements, only one drive-through window per building is allowed, but a drive-through window may service more than one vehicle. Do they consider an ordering window or a pay window a drive-through window? I'm thinking in the McDonald's down on Route 1 by Burger King, where you, you know, you have a pay window and then, and then like a pickup window. Is that still only?
I think that's how most of them operate, and I think you could interpret number one more than one way.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's a little ambiguous.
Yeah, okay, that's what threw me on that, there's only one. And then I'm looking at 7.3.2, number two, drive-through entrances and exits shall be located at least 25 feet from any intersection or pedestrian crosswalk. And I think the, I think, one, the McDonald's on, is it Union Street or Summer Street, where, you know, the crosswalk cuts right in front of the, basically where the window is, and then I think we approved one for Friendly's that never got built, where the drive-through, the crosswalk was right there. So I was just curious on, if I'm misreading that, or is that something that we approved and we have the right to approve?
So we did approve one for Friendly's. There was a crosswalk in their parking lot, but I think it met this requirement by being 25 feet away. I'm not exactly sure what, why they put this in, but it seems like it was well thought out. After you purchase whatever you're getting from a drive-through, whether it's a bank drive-through and you're counting cash and putting it away, or, you know, you just went through McDonald's and you're starting to pull away from the drive-through, oftentimes drivers are distracted, whether they try to take a french fry out of that bag before they get home. It's a good idea, I think, to have a separation requirement between the drive-through and any crosswalks so that that would help to reduce any pedestrian accident incidence.
Paul, am I, am I, am I missing something? But 7.3.2, are these all new requirements put in?
No.
Those are all existing requirements, right?
It's the current bylaw that you see.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, okay.
And the only change is seven.
Bailout lane, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry to take up your time. I was just curious on, I was thinking about some of the drive-throughs through town and then I'm reading this and I'm thinking, well, maybe, I don't know what happened on that one, and then what happened on this one, but, all right, that's it, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, just on that, what Ernie brought up about the McDonald's situation where there's more than one window, is there a way we could allow for that to be, if that is the wave of where they're going, so that we tighten that up and it's not so ambiguous? Or just to take a look at that?
If we are going to change this section of the bylaw, it would seem appropriate opportunity to make any other changes that the board feels is necessary. And so if you would like, I can try to rework number one a little bit to make it clear that it's, that it is acceptable, it is allowed to have an order window and a pickup window in one building, but not two separate drive-throughs, which could be four windows in one building.
Right.
Is that what you're driving at?
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
I can, I can fix number one to make that clear.
Thank you.
Or a pay window, however you want to word it.
Because that's what we did with the McDonald's down on Route 1. They have third windows. That was the whole.
Yeah, there's three, yeah.
So, Paul.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Next item.
So the next item is the hospital overlay district. As you know, on June 28th, there was a major flood in town that caused Norwood Hospital to flood. The flooding damage was so extensive that the hospital has been closed since then. At this point in time, we understand that the hospital officials are still weighing their options about what to do, whether to repair and rehab the existing building or buildings, or to tear them down and build new. The general manager and the selectmen wanted to make sure that in the event that the hospital decides to tear down buildings and build new buildings, that the zoning would not limit their options for doing that. So we were asked by the general manager to write a zoning amendment that would allow for not only the hospital to rebuild and to meet, to rebuild in a way that would provide the type of facility that the hospital would like to build. So they've requested that we remove any barriers in zoning, such as building height, that would be a limitation in the event that the hospital does decide that they want to clear the campus or remove certain buildings that had extensive damage and rebuild. So we received this request in, last month in August, and we were busy getting ready for working on these other zoning amendments and the Route 1 rezoning. So we hired Ted Brovitz to draft this new bylaw, and what it, we received the first draft of a medical services overlay district bylaw. Pat and I looked at maps and drove around the neighborhood of the hospital, and we proposed boundaries for a medical services overlay district. Currently, the hospital's located in the general business zone, and there are height limitations to that zone that would not allow the hospital to even rebuild, if they, the hospital's higher now than the zoning laws for, and I imagine over the years, they had to get some variances and special permits for what you see on the ground today. So Pat's brought up an aerial photo that shows the proposed boundary districts for a new medical services overlay district, and any uses, any medical-related uses locating in this area would be allowed by special permit or by right, but we wanted to try to make sure that any medical-related uses were clearly allowed in that district and that we would try to accommodate those uses within the zoning bylaw. I've reviewed the first draft of the bylaw and provided Ted with some feedback, and he's going to do a little bit more work on how we handle these going forward. So we're right at that point now, where I gave him some feedback saying, you know, we need to know what uses are allowed, and the first draft did not include the scheduled use regulations that say which ones would require a special permit, which ones would be allowed by right. For example, something like a medical doctor's office, a physical therapy practice, these were all uses that I would like to say we could allow by right in that district that don't require a special permit, that's specifically designed to accommodate those types of uses. We really need to get a second draft of this before we get too much into the details, but what I'd like to do is, I think I need to get a second draft from Ted before we give it to the board, because right now, it's just not quite ready, having just undergone one, one review of comments.
Can you throw that map back up again, Patrick, please? And the reason why I ask that is, it should come up Walpole Street, all right? Excuse me, you have a series, a series of doctors' offices, medical centers on both sides of Walpole Street. And I, I didn't know, I got disoriented on the map here, exactly where. So, okay, it does not, it doesn't go back far enough, okay?
What we tried to do in our drive-through the neighborhood was to make sure that any existing medical use was in that district. And we also looked at some kind of underperforming properties that we thought would make sense to include in the district for further expansion or medical-related uses in the future. You can see on the right side how there's a parking lot that's included. I'm pretty sure that hospital, that parking lot is owned by the hospital. We wanted to make sure that was included. But then also, across the street, on East Hoyle Street, and I'm panning down towards the bottom of what you're seeing, across East Hoyle Street, there's two parking lots there, and we thought it made sense to include those because there were opportunities in the future to have medical-related uses developed on those properties, or, or to allow a parking garage on those properties. Parking garage is one of the things that we are going to allow as part of this zoning bylaw amendment. They're pretty much standard in most hospital, most hospitals to stack the parking, and I just wanted to make sure you were clear that that was also on the table.
Mr. Sheen?
I just want to say I'm glad to hear that. I think that, you know, we had a plan before, as before, and I think they pulled back, but they did want to put a parking garage on that, on the property of the hospital, probably not far from where all the flooding took place, but I could see where it could be very beneficial and actually necessary if you're going to be rebuilding a hospital in this situation.
With everyone allowed for growth.
The other point I had is, I know we, you think of going up in the height, you, you kind of say where the hospital is now, that you, we don't mind having the height there so much, but when you get into other areas where, you know, you have some doctor's offices in, well, the guilde is fine, it's, it's not a bad height, but you get into some of these older homes, I think it would be, it may not seem right to see if they were going to start tearing those down and build, build higher up. So I, I kind of see where the hospital is, I could see where the building's being taller, but if you stretch too far out and let them be as tall as, you know, the hospital's going to be, it may not work. Those that are on the periphery are on the edge.
So right now, in the general business zone, the maximum height is 30 feet, and existing hospital is taller than that. Ted had included in the bylaw the step-back provisions that are in the mixed-use overlay district regulations. So it partially addresses, I think, your concern, Joe, in that they couldn't build a tall building right on the street line. As you go further back on the property, the height can increase, and I think you may recall those diagrams in the MUOD bylaw that was approved last year.
Yes.
That addresses that canyon effect, but it doesn't really respond to your concern that the buildings across the street could, could be much higher. I think what we need to do is make it clear in the bylaw amendment that, that the hospital could exceed that height, but maybe we need to call out the other buildings in the district are not allowed to go as high as what the hospital is requesting. And to be honest with you, what we understand the hospital would like to have is, I think, 80 feet in height. And so your concern, Joe, I think is well-founded, that, okay, like, maybe the voters will go along with the hospital building being that high, but they certainly probably would not want to see the guilde building raised and to have an 80-foot-high building somewhere else in that district. And so we'll make sure that, that the regulations are specific to what we're going to allow for height.
Good idea. The other thing is, I really like that step-back provision, and I think it works well, or it will, will, will work well, and it, I'm glad that we used it uptown, and it should work well here.
Paul, quick question, on those two parking lots down by the train station?
Yep.
Are those owned by the same person?
I don't think so.
No.
Pat, you know, I know, one of the, one of the properties is owned by an auto repair shop, I think Ernie does business with them. This one here with the two buildings. The other one, is that owned by the hospital or by the T-PAT, do you know?
Um, I think by the T, I can double-check the GIS, but I know the hospital, I think, rents, I don't think they actually own it.
I, Paul, I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but at one point, I thought that the Sansone family owned one of those, one of those parking lots, and they may have sold it years ago, they used to park school buses there, and I believe at one point, the Sansone family owned one of them, I don't know if they still do or not.
Okay. I was just going to say the same thing, I think Ernie's correct. Down in the bottom, the lower part of the picture here, matter of fact, they, you can buy a monthly pass if you take the train, and it's a cheaper alternative for people who take the train than to use the T-Pass. I believe it was the Sansones that owned that property. I don't know if it's changed hands. I thought they still did, but maybe, they still do, but maybe they, maybe it has changed hands, I don't know.
Thank you, Joe. Now, coming all the way up to Washington Street, that's where the, what is it, the flower shop there, the, all the way, all the way up the corner, Paul, right?
Yeah. And, and, you know, we should note that the owner of these properties, where the flower shop is and the two adjacent, Jack Roach passed away last week.
Oh, no.
Jack had, he had stopped by the office about six months ago to tell Pat and Jack had, um, he had stopped by the office about six months ago to tell Pat and I that he had purchased these buildings and that he was planning to, to rehab them and, and rent them out. Uh, and his plans, you know, sounded great. We are pleased to see some reinvestment, particularly right across from the hospital. I think Jack was aware that, um, he wouldn't have any problem, uh, renting out apartments, brand new refurnished apartments across the street from the hospital where the staff there would probably, uh, lease those up real quick. But we were sorry to hear, um, the end of last week that, that Jack passed away.
But that renovation of those two apartments going down the street is almost complete.
Yes, further down the street, Jack was involved with that project as well, um, up at In the Rama Center and across from the bakery. And yeah, that project is, uh, making good progress.
And Paul, just, uh, I just checked the GIS. Um, the hospital, I think, does own the parking lot closest to the railroad and its brother's Realty owns the, uh, the other parking lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Petrykowski.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Again, Paul, I agree. I think we need a second pass on a couple of things here. Uh, one is I know we have a, a, a separate zoning for medical marijuana, uh, cultivating, and I think there's actually one up and running, uh, in Norwood. But, uh, as we look at this medical use area, uh, we may want to put a note that medical marijuana is not allowed, or if we, if we're going to make the change to allow it, I don't know. But I mean, we should probably spell that out someplace, either yea or nay. And, and, um, the last line of, uh, nine point nine point three principal permitted uses, I think you touched on this a little bit, but the last line, you know, it lists physical occupational therapist, dentist, and other healthcare providers. And that's pretty wide open, other healthcare providers. Uh, that kind of leaves it up to the discretion of the planning board, or should we say, you know, other healthcare providers, um, authorized by the Board of Health, uh, or eliminate that altogether. So that was, uh, a line that I, that I thought was a little open-ended.
All right, um.
That's it. Thank you.
Other healthcare providers like Dr. Kavorkian.
And you're going to need the marijuana district moved up there.
Um, so I'm, I'm going to assume that there's a consensus that we, we, we don't want a medical marijuana dispensers, dispensary in that district. Is, is that the board agree with that or we want to let that be allowed or?
I don't care. I would say no, probably.
I, I wonder what, uh, drugs they do dispense. I imagine a lot of them are even stronger, uh, in the hospital pharmacy.
Yeah. Um, but for now, we'll, we'll put a statement in there that, that, that indicates that that's not allowed use in the district.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bamber.
Is there any way, uh, that parcel that's across, you know, the Gild building? You know, we have the setbacks to kind of encourage, uh, less canyoning, but can we maybe make the buffer a little stronger also? Just looking forward.
I think Mr. Healthcare has took a note.
Yep, so, um, we'll take a look. I think there are some provisions there, uh, for, for buffering, particularly against the residential neighborhood, but I'll take a look at that, make sure that there is something in there and, um, to protect the residential neighborhoods.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. Any more on that? Let's go to the next item. Landscaping.
Oh.
As, uh, you will recall, when Mrs. Homewood was on the planning board, um, a lot of, uh, discussion focused around landscaping. And over and over and over again, what we saw were site plans come in with some landscaping, um, oftentimes an afterthought. And, and many times we thought that, uh, the bylaw, you know, really didn't require a lot of quality landscaping. Um, and on a case by case basis, uh, Debbie would, would negotiate with each applicant, which is really not how, uh, this is supposed to go. We're supposed to have a bylaw and follow the bylaw and not, um, twist people's arms to, um, exceed the requirements of the, the town zoning bylaw. And so last year I had committed to Debbie that we would, um, have a zoning bylaw amendment that would beef up the landscaping requirements. And so, um, I, I, I drafted a bylaw amendment and, and put it down and, and, um, picked it back up a couple of times. Um, but what I'm proposing is, uh, a bylaw amendment that would, um, increase the landscaping in a number of ways. And I want to go to my memo that we did for the board. Uh, to refresh my memory, the required landscaping areas and parking lots in this bylaw would increase from 2% to 5%. When we reviewed the site plan for the McDonald's in the downtown area, we were just shocked when they told us, well, you know, this, this site plan meets the bylaw requirements. So increasing the amount of landscaping, I think, will really, um, uh, change how these commercial properties look and enhance, uh, the beauty of, uh, our commercial properties. Right now, our bylaw only allows for evergreen shrubs. And, and, you know, when I reviewed, uh, the site plan for the other McDonald's up on Route One, they had like a hundred, um, of the same type of holly shrub. Uh, and, and I said to them, why don't you, you know, throw in something that's going to bloom, something with some color? And they said, well, your bylaw doesn't, doesn't allow for that. And so the second thing that we've incorporated into this draft bylaw amendment is to allow for, uh, deciduous flowering shrubs such as springtime favorites like lilacs and phasipia, um, which are currently prohibited in, in our zoning bylaw, which to me makes not much sense. Um, this amendment will fix that, uh, by allowing a mix of shrubs and trees and, and flowering shrubs. The bylaw, um, doesn't mention flowers at all. And, and, um, the best landscaping that we all see is landscaping that changes during the growing season, from spring tulips to summer irises and, and lilies to fall mums. And our zoning bylaw doesn't allow for that. Um, this is, this is, these are plants that we're very familiar with in New England and they're part of the, the natural landscape and the built environment. And this bylaw amendment would, um, include allowing for, uh, different types of shock, uh, flowering shrubberies. Um, the bylaw doesn't mention anything about a landscape berm. And, and I know Debbie had brought this up several times. It's basically our landscape requirements are flat, flat on the ground. Landscape berms are an excellent way to screen not only visually properties, but, um, they, they're very effective at sound attenuation. And so, um, we threw something in there that said that those are allowed and encouraged. Right now in the, in the parking lot requirements, it requires, um, one tree every, uh, 40 feet. And I'm proposing that we, uh, change that to one tree every 33, 30 feet to slightly increase the number of trees. Um, it's standard operating procedure for landscape architects to, uh, um, call for plants that are drought tolerant. And this, uh, reduces the amount of water that's needed to, uh, keep the plant material alive. And so, um, I mentioned that, uh, they should, uh, encourage them to use drought tolerant plants. Um, as we also know in New England, our parking lots get plowed with snow and the snow can, um, can damage extensively certain types of plantings. So we want to make sure that the landscape architects inspecting out the plant material, um, understands that, that in areas where they are going to allow for the snow to be piled up, the snow storage areas, that they use types of plantings like Rosa regosa that can take burial. Um, tree species, uh, should be disease and insect resistant. Um, that's a standard thing that all landscape architects do is call out plants that, that are that way, but I want to codify that in the bylaw. Um, as I mentioned earlier, encourage the landscape berms and, um, a minimum of four inches of mulch, uh, required in planting beds to help, uh, reduce the, um, uh, help preserve moisture, reduce the amount of water that needs to go on, um, and also enhance, uh, the beauty of those areas that, that don't have plant materials that are just covered with, um, um, with mulch. So that is my proposed amendment. Um, I, I, I will mention that the board had, um, asked me to hire a landscape architect to do this project, this bylaw amendment. I contacted, uh, two of them that I know and, and they weren't the types of landscape architects that were interested in, in writing a bylaw amendment. So, um, it didn't take a lot of effort for me to review it and to come up with these proposed changes. Um, I'd be glad to answer any questions about, um, the proposed landscape bylaw.
Mr. Sheen.
Is there, uh, are there options there where, um, when it may be more, um, advisable to have more trees and less shrubs or, you know, I, I noticed that, I know that we did that, I believe at the, um, skating rink, the skating club. And it allows for them to, you know, push snow around without crushing the smaller plants, you know, if that, if that's the case. And it may even give, it depends on how, what you plant, but gives you better sightlines also. The whole idea of a berm, I think, is great. Uh, I think it does help and it, it kind of beefs up the landscaping, brings everything up and it's, uh, it, it's more noticeable. So I think that's a great idea.
So I, as I recall it at the skating club, they told us that they didn't like putting bushes in, in islands and parking lots because, um, the bushes were, were easily be damaged, wouldn't last long and would need to be replaced. And I think they might've asked for a waiver and to allow them to do trees instead. And, um, I think Joe brings up a great point. Um, maybe I should add something in that says that the board can authorize, um, mixing and matching or changing, you know, from bushes to trees on a case by case basis. Is, is that what you're driving at, Joe?
Yeah, and I'm sure that it's probably more expensive to get the trees than a, you know, a bunch of little bushes. Um, so I, you know, that's a, that's something that they would have to, you know, we'd have to all deal with, you know, it may make it too, hopefully you don't want to make it too expensive for them, but I do think you end up with a better product. And we know the folks down at the skating club, uh, were the type that would rather spend the money upfront and, uh, have something very, very nice looking and that would last as opposed to throwing the bushes in and having them die and replace them. So I, I'd like, I, I just want to see some, um, that, that we have options.
Okay. I'll, um, I'll add some language that, that, uh, allows some options and, um, um, and flexibility in the types of plantings, um, given certain locations on the site.
Also, I like the, I like your idea of, you know, disease resistance and, and the, and drought resistance, that, those kinds of things, uh, I think are very helpful.
A good landscape architect does that anyways, but why not include it right in the regulations?
Yeah, because not everyone is going to be, uh, who's putting these in, as we learn, uh, may not be at the top of their game. Uh, some of them are better than others and, uh, this should give them some guidance.
So we'll call this the Homewood Amendment.
Yes.
Next.
Any more questions on that one? All right. The stormwater management bylaw. Um, we had an extensive discussion with, um, Kerry two weeks ago from the Napontet River Watershed Association. Um, we, uh, I'm, I'm not going to talk much about this one because I think we had a good discussion. Uh, before we jump onto the next one, is there any questions or discussion on the proposed, um, stormwater management regulations? All right, we got into that a couple of weeks ago. The next one is, uh, the mixed use overlay district. So we've just had one of these, uh, applications and, um, for the first application that the board approved on Day Street. And, and Pat and I need to, uh, follow up on that and find out just what's going on. We haven't seen any construction, but the, I think there was a condition of approval that, uh, half of that money, um, that was donated be upfront before they start construction. But during that, that, um, site point review, it became apparent that our bylaw didn't have a provision specifically listing the option to make a monetary donation that could go into an account, um, that the town has for capital improvements in the downtown and that, um, those donations over time could add up to do bigger projects. Um, so there was, we, we checked this with town council and he's, he said, no, we weren't allowed to do that and that if we wanted to do that, to create an account to, uh, to hold, uh, donations, that we should specifically state that in the bylaw. And so, um, I think Pat wrote this one and I'll stop and let him explain it a little further.
Yep, so, um, this is, uh, I guess provision seven, donation to town's MUOD Public Benefits Fund. So as Paul mentioned, um, we had this option, but we didn't really, um, you know, we didn't specify an exact number. And so it kind of definitely during our, our public hearings with the, um, the Day Street applicant, it was kind of, you know, it, it wasn't a real, um, I guess mathematical, you know, we're just, we're kind of, we kind of came to a, a conclusion on a monetary donation, but we didn't really have a set policy in place of what that percentage would be or how it would be calculated. Um, likewise, you know, we could have many of these projects or, or a few of these projects. Um, and depending on what public benefit, um, you know, an applicant chooses, you know, that, that depends on obviously whether or not, you know, this, um, donation account would get used. But having an option for that money to kind of pool up, um, rather than just having, you know, you know, 10,000 here, 7,000 here or so forth, uh, you, you, we can at least use, um, use those funds to, towards a project that is probably more substantial. So say you want to, um, repair sidewalks on Cottage Street or East Cottage Street. Um, you know, that takes, you know, obviously funding that kind of, you know, you need that to accrue and to build up. So that's why, um, kind of creating a, a donation account allows for that. And so we don't have to just spend the money, find a project right away. We can have that money build in an account and we could use it towards a more, um, substantial, um, development in our downtown. Um, the one option I kind of wanted, uh, the one thing I really wanted to bring up with you was, um, the language where it says a monetary donation may be made to, uh, provide a public benefit of no less than, I have 2% of an applicant's projected construction costs. Um, that's kind of where I'm trying to create a, uh, some sort of reasoning on, on, on the price that we ask and how we kind of quantify that. Um, and so that's something I'm not sure entirely if that number is, 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 is too low, um, if, if that's the best way to calculate that. And, and I like to hear from all of you whether or not that language kind of makes sense to you, or if that's something that, um, could be looked into a little bit more before we go forward with it, or if, or if that number should be increased or, or so forth. So, uh, I'd leave it all to you guys.
Patrick, on Day Street, you have that number handy by any chance? Yeah.
What do you? No, not off the top of my head.
Wasn't it like $13,000?
Yeah, it wa, it was under 15. It was probably like, yeah, like you said, 13,000 or something like that, 12,000.
And what did he have for projected costs?
We didn't have this calculate, that's the thing, we didn't have this calculation really set up. Um, so we came to that number during that public hearing, but there was no real, um...
Formula.
Yeah, the form, that we came to that number because I think Mark Ryan had, had a bunch of, um, projected projects in the downtown. And so that 13,000 was the equivalent of buying like a season's worth. And so that 13,000 was the equivalent of buying like a season's worth of downtown banners for the uh, the light poles. So that's where we came up with that number because like, oh, that number, it's a small project, it's a smaller number. Um, if going this route, I, I think it's a little bit more structured. Um, it's not just kind of finding a number that works, but finding a number that kind of, you know, if you have a set, if your construction costs are projected at, you know, $500,000, then you know, then 2% of $500,000 would be your monetary donation. If you so, if, if, if you want to go that route as a public benefit. Uh, again, this is just, you know, a, a seventh benefit out of uh, six other benefits. So um, we know that there's, you know, publicly accessible parking, making a building LEED certified, um, out, uh, publicly accessible open space. So there's many different options for a public benefit. I think just having this option, um, yeah, having this, having this provision as an option, it, it definitely probably comes in handy for more smaller projects, kind of similar to Day Street. Uh, whereas larger projects, I feel like we, we would try to push for, you know, something um, like publicly accessible open space.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions, gentlemen? Anybody else?
We can talk with the building commissioner about the 2% and, and see if we can get some kind of a feel for that. I, I think that it's probably, it, it's probably on target. And, and you'll recall that when we were um, reviewing the Day Street project, um, Mark Ryan had provided this list of potential projects. One of them included um, replacing the curbing on the street. And right now there's just like an asphalt berm. In some cases, there's no curbing. And it, it would have been a great project to put some granite curbing along that street. But it was too much money to reasonably ask the applicant to donate. Uh, and this is really how we got into this whole discussion about, well, wouldn't it be great if they could provide some money um, towards a project like that? And then if someone, the next project that came along could uh, make a similar donation. Over time, we could generate enough money to make um, you know, significant improvements to the, the downtown area. Um, so let's think about the 2% um, and talk to some people we know. And when we, we discuss this uh, bylaw amendment next time, um, hopefully we'll have um, a little bit more information that will help us determine whether 2% is the appropriate amount to include in the bylaw.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, Mr. Sheehan.
Well, you have no less than 2%. That looks like a minimum, but I wonder if that's going to be a bit, you know, it'll be fought to say, well, no, this is the minimum and we're not paying more than the minimum. If you, you know, i, i, it, it may just become that. But uh, I do like the, the idea of no more than 2% if you, if you thought you could get more in some circumstances.
Mr. Sheehan. Would, would it make sense to um, kind of make that a solid um, statement? So instead of uh, monetary donation may uh, no less than 2%, but monetary donation to provide a public benefit of 2%.
I was thrown out there. No, I kind of, I kind of like what, what it is, but I do have a funny feeling that it, it, in practice, it may become just 2%, but uh, it's something to think about.
Yeah, you're right.
Mr. Patrick Kowski.
Yeah, thanks for the chairman. Yeah, Joe, you still might tend to, yeah, if you say no less than, that's what you're going to get. You're going to get 2%. Uh, Paul, I uh, just, if my high school math serves me well, if it's a million dollar project, that would be $20,000, right? Is 2% of a million? So.
I'll have to trust your high school, man.
Yeah. Right, Mr. Tilly Coburn, where I, when I need you. Um, so I, I don't know, on the Day Street, we, I think we got like 12 or 13,000. Um, and I don't know if that's a million dollar project or not. Uh, but uh, that's just perspective. Paul, just uh, to change on the downtown overlay, uh, mixed use district. Um, it's probably too late in the game to talk about uh, density uh, downtown, uh, probably too late in the game for this town meeting uh, to, to maybe address that or look at that. Is that something maybe where we're too far along in the game and maybe wait until the spring?
Well, with, with 10 amendments, um, I, I'd like to kind of close the window on, on that uh, for amendments proposed by, by the planning board. However, having said that, I heard a rumor that somebody could be submitting a petition by law amendment to increase the density. Um, I mentioned at the outset that we have just submitted our public hearing notices to the newspaper to advertise the hearing on the 19th. Um, the window of opportunity uh, for any other hearings is going to also slam shut. And, and this has been kind of an ongoing problem with people that submit petition zoning amendments. They, they do it, they always do it in the last minute. And they don't, you know, we encourage people to come in and talk to the planning board before they propose any zoning amendments. Um, and, and oftentimes that doesn't happen. So um, there could be someone, someone out there that is uh, in the process of writing one and preparing to submit one. But we don't have one at this time. And if they, uh, if they don't submit it uh, uh, right away, um, we may not be able to schedule a hearing in a timely manner.
Well, that's fine. I, I just uh, it, it, it's, it's too big of an issue and too much of a hot topic to rush through. So um, I think it's something that we need to look at as a board. Uh, talk to Ted, maybe, you know, reexamine it. But let's take our time on it and maybe can, you know, we could address it in the spring.
Okay, I agree. That sounds good.
Okay. Anyone else? What do you have?
The next item is uh, open lot storage. And as the board knows, this has been a contentious issue that we've been trying to manage uh, over uh, the last five or six years. We've had a, a number of these particular applications. The, the zoning board has also had a number of them. And the zoning board, by the way, did receive a new uh, special permit application filed last week for open lot storage on Route 1, right adjacent to the existing Subaru dealership. Um, Ted Brobitz has drafted an amendment um, in connection with the work that he's done on the Route 1 rezoning. Um, I've gone through the, the, a review of the amendment and suggested some changes to Ted. I think that Ernie and Brian, excuse me, also um, have had a chance to look at it. Uh, I need, I need to have Ted, Ted has um, turned around a revision based on my initial review comments. I just got that, I think, last Friday. I need to review that and make sure that all of those comments that I had have been incorporated. And I think that um, we'll then be able to release this uh, a draft zoning bylaw amendment to the public and the board for uh, some review and comment.
Thank you.
Ernie and Brian, I, have you guys looked at this?
I have not seen the revised one unless it's the one that I printed today. I printed the one that Patrick uh, sent in the zip folder. And uh, I haven't gone through it fully because I just printed it today. But I know that uh, Brian and I had talked about uh, and thank you, Paul, for getting to Ted and, and he answered some of our questions. Uh, like on the structured parking, 200 spots, you know, uh, I don't know if he's addressed that. I mean, is it, is it highly worth a, a guy to invest in a structured parking for only 200 spots? I don't know, things like that.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Um, Pat, do you know which version the board got?
I, I believe this is the one from the 22nd. Uh, I, I think we got, I, this is after the um, after the stakeholder meeting.
It's called draft 2.0.
Yeah, so this is the revised version. So I haven't had a chance to look at it, but um, I'd like the board members to look at it. And um, at this point, where I think it's, it's ready to ha, to be released to the public and, and have some discussion. Um, we will discuss this tomorrow night at the selectmen's meeting. Ted's getting planning to go over this as well. So um, if you have any questions of specific comments or requested amendments to this version 2.0, um, please take some notes and, and shoot us a copy, an email, and we'll pass that along to Ted.
Paul. Um, I did a one quick question because I did, I did read this again. And on uh, section 7.8.5, it's on page three. It's unregistered vehicles. And it, it says, "Storage of unregistered motor vehicles for more than 60 days on properties not authorized under this section is prohibited and shall constitute a violation of the bylaw." So they're saying that an unregistered vehicle, if they bring in, if they bring in a, a, a new car, it's only allowed to sit there 60 days or is that in addition to what's allowed? I'm not quite sure, I wasn't quite sure on that one.
Yeah, I, I noticed that and, and kind of raised my eyebrows and, and um, wondered if that was a little too restrictive. Um, I, I, I think maybe we need to uh, it, it, because I don't know what the turnover rate of these vehicles are. But I imagine that the dealers are holding these things for longer than two months. I, I, I would guess, you know, three or four months would be closer to the norm. And so um, we can talk to Ted about changing that because I think 60 days is really a little too short. While we're on um, this particular page, if, if we go back up to number one, locational restrictions, there was uh, I had requested that Ted changed this to eliminate the within one mile of Route, Route 1. What I was, what, what I was anticipating is that, that we would allow these vehicles to be stored along the Route 1 corridor in the new uh, Boston Providence Highway District. I, I did not want to have um, allow this in the manufacturing district or within one mile of Route 1. And so I did ask Ted to, to make that correction and that wasn't made in this version. So um, I'll follow up with him. I wanted to see what the board's reaction was to my thinking that, that we really just want to keep this tight on to Route 1, not allow them on Route 1, uh, on the street frontage. Because we want to preserve that for commercial uses, um, but, but kind of backlot storage within the district.
I, I, I actually underlined that myself, Paul. Uh, because that was Route 1 off, a mile off of Route 1 puts you up onto, you know, puts you in everywhere. Just refresh my memory, is the Vanderbilt area part of the district?
It is, and um,
All the way back?
Yeah, a, and so I, I, I wanted the, the reference to one mile to be eliminated because I did not want to allow auto storage in the limited manufacturing zone of University Ave. We've already, the board's already been there and made it very clear. We didn't think that's what we wanted in our office park district. So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to eliminate that reference to one mile. So I, I'm, I'm really proposing to really tighten, tighten up on the open lot storage, eliminate the use from the manufacturing district, just allow in that one district along Route 1. Um, and all of the existing open lot storage facilities that have been permitted over the years by the planning board and the zoning board would become grandfathered. There are um, over 300 cars currently stored um, in Norwood. And um, we think that uh, that that's enough. And we should tighten down the regulations and not allow it in M District and to just kind of keep it close on to Route 1.
I agree, just what, what's there is there and, and going forward, it's got to be in the uh, Providence Highway District.
All right. All right, the next item, almost done, um, is the Route 1 rezoning. We've gone through um, one review of the draft bylaw and have, have suggested to Ted that he make um, a number of uh, changes to it. And we're waiting for the revised version. I've also asked Ted to um, to provide to us this week um, the complete zoning bylaw amendment, just the amendment. What he's done for us is provide uh, sections with commentaries below the amendment um, to help explain to the reader what, what each individual change is, is all about and why it's being proposed. So at this point, we're, we're, we're getting down to um, a, a month or so from town meeting. And I just want to have the, the, the clean zoning bylaw amendments to focus on. So we'll anticipate having those for the board at the next uh, next planning board meeting. Have, have, the board members had a chance to go through this. Do you have any questions or concerns about, you know, what's being proposed at this point?
Yeah, Paul.
Amanda?
I don't know if it's in this uh, version, but at some point I read uh, the storage of 25,000 gallons or less of hazardous materials or 25,000 gallons or more hazardous materials uh, in the, the new uh, district. And I was wondering if that was a mistake, if that was supposed to be in manufacturing or, not sure where it was exactly.
Yeah, so for me, that rings a bell. It's up, it's an existing, it's language currently existing in the zoning bylaw. And um, it, it's uh, Pat's zooming in on, is it service establishments?
I think wholesale business and storage. So there's a provision in there for uh, I think it's, this week, I'm not wrong, for the 25,000 gallons of toxic or hazardous materials.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's something I think that's allowed in manufacturing. And so it looks like Ted may have, you know, by increasing the uses within the uh, Boston Providence um, Highway District, he added it there as well. Um, but I don't know if that's more geared towards manufacturing or what we'd want to see in manufacturing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that kind of fitting in there. Um, with the other uses that are allowed. I, I don't know if I'd want to be sitting next, next to that, say in a different building or, you know, nearby.
So, so as Pat mentioned, this is, this is something that's already in the zoning bylaw. And I think Ted, I think Ted just kind of referenced the existing bylaw. We can, we can change that. When I first read this language, I, I kind of scratched my head. Um, it looked pretty strange. And, and when we're talking about 25,000 gallons of tox, toxic or hazardous material, it, it does seem like quite a bit, um, less than more than, um. So why don't we take a look at just specifically what he was referencing and see if we can do that in a different way?
Good. Yeah, I, that's all, I'm thinking the same thing too. He might have just, you know, in order to expand the level, amount of uses um, for the highway business district, he just kind of gave it a yes or a planning board special per, uh, a planning board special permit. Um, but if this, if this scenario doesn't really fit with what we're envisioning for that district, then I guess it probably would make sense to change that, like Paul said.
Mr. Patrick Kowski.
Yeah, just uh, uh, Brian and I have talked about it and Paul, you and I have talked uh, a lot about it. Uh, but yeah, I'll just bring it up to the other members of the board, my feelings on, on the housing. And, and uh, I think it's a big uh, it's going to be a big issue. And Paul, you had mentioned uh, probably going to town meeting with uh, two or three versions of housing. Because we don't want that one issue to, to uh, block this. Um, you know, I'm just going to, you know, my views, I think everybody knows my views on, on density. I think that the, following the uptown uh, density, uh, it, it, it's not, it's not high enough for Route 1. And my view is not to have overwhelming, huge apartment complexes, but you know, if you look like we had talked about a building like Olivati's, you know, and the density in there, if that building was on Route 1, everyone would say it's beautiful, you know, and but it exceeds the density limit. So to me, it's not the density, but it's the aesthetics of the building. And, you know, what does it look like? Does it fit the, you know, the locus? You know, it... Does how's the building look from the outside? That's what people drive by. They don't know if there's 30 apartments in there or 35 apartments in there. How's the building look? What's... How does it fit into... I know I'm repeating myself, you know, but how does it fit into the area? Does it look like it grew there, like it belongs there? Does it look out of place? And it's the old eye test curb appeal kind of thing. So I know it's... We have, I know it's a tight rope here with density, and the people get scared of that word. And but I just think that we should allow more... A little more apartments or density on Route 1, depending, again, on what the building looks like. And to me, that's the eye test.
So she have a question?
No question.
So Ernie has brought up what's probably going to be the most contentious element of the proposed changes to the zoning on Route 1. I guess I should back up and note that I talked to Ted and suggested to him that calling this the Blue Star Memorial Highway was probably not the best name because nobody was aware that it was a Blue Star Highway or even what that meant. And so I've asked him to change all references in the bylaw to call this the Boston Providence Highway District. So that's the first change that I asked him to make. I asked him to make a number of changes to the draft regulations, and I raised some questions. I had some concerns related to his making cross references to the mixed-use overlay district for the downtown. I checked some cross references, and it didn't seem like it was the right reference to the right other section of the bylaw that things had changed. So I've asked him to go back and carefully look at those things. With respect to allowing for multifamily housing along the Route 1 corridor, we originally went into this, I was thinking that we should just allow mixed-use development, so buildings that have commercial on the first floor and residential above as one form of mixed use, and the other form of mixed use being more than one building on a piece of property, and the commercial buildings would be focused along the frontage of Route 1. But behind those buildings, apartment or condominium buildings could be constructed on the same lot as mixed use. After giving it some thought, I kind of pulled back and thought, well, maybe we should just allow for this use on at the major intersections, the crossroads with Route 1, because those crossroads would help to provide ways for people to get around, away from where they live, but not necessarily have to get on Route 1 and add to traffic. So if they were on a cross street, they could go in either directions or up and down Route 1. It is likely that we will get some concerns from town meeting members and residents about allowing any multifamily in Norwood. As most of you know, over the last 10 years, there's been great controversy about the number of apartments that were in town to start with, and then we had 340B projects come to the town and add a substantial number of apartment units. And the residents had indicated that they kind of had enough of that. Housing is very limited in Norwood right now. If you wanted to build a new home on a vacant lot, there are hardly any lots available. There are no subdivisions with vacant lots to build on that I'm aware of. And so that means that if we can't build any more single-family homes, that with a given, that the demand for new housing will continue to be strong in the future, particularly in eastern Massachusetts. The governor's indicated, you know, that he'd like to see more housing and that the supply and demand effects would, over time, hopefully bring down the cost of housing in the Boston area. But there's been calls for more housing from state government. Knowing that people want to live in Norwood and right now that there are people that want to move to town and people that are moving out of town because of a lack of housing choices and not a lot of new development available, it made sense to me because this was a type of use that the market was demanding, the market was calling for. We don't need more office space in town, we need more housing. So I suggested that we go the approach of on the crossroads. In the event that the planning board encounters strong resistance, either during our hearings, our meetings with the town meeting members that we have scheduled, or at town meeting, I think it would be prudent for us to have a fallback position. And that would be, instead of allowing the seven or eight intersections that are shown on the map now, that we would fall back to allowing housing at two of those intersections, for example. And for discussion purposes, I'll throw out the Dean Street intersection and the Everett Street intersection as two major crossroads that have land adjacent to those intersections that is not currently being used to its highest and best use and has development potential for redevelopment. In the event that we encounter strong opposition, and we don't think that we'll be successful in getting a two-thirds vote at town meeting to approve the Route 1 rezoning, I think that we should be prepared to completely abandon the thought of allowing any county multifamily housing. So I wanted to kind of throw that out for discussion tonight with the board and see what you think about that and what we should do moving ahead.
Paul, quick question for you. When you talk about abandoning, are you talking about just withdrawing it at this time without prejudice?
I'm talking about removing any references to multifamily housing connected to the Route 1 rezoning.
Throw out a Plan A and a Plan B, so to speak.
Yeah. So right now, Plan A is allowing for multifamily at, I think, six or seven intersections shown on the zoning map. Plan B would be to scale that back substantially to maybe just one or two intersections. And I threw out the two that I thought made the most sense. And Plan C would be to completely eliminate any, allowing for any housing along the Route 1 corridor.
Oh, good.
And you would do that just by an amendment? You would just say, we're going to amend this and throw forth Plan B and say, we're going to remove whatever section and replace it with this and just move on? Is that it? Add, tell me?
Since we have two planning board members and a town meeting members, I think that would be you would be making that amendment. Either you or Ernie would have that in your back pocket. And I don't know how we would do it, but that is what I'm suggesting, that we plan a contingency for that.
Because it's definitely something that could positively happen.
Yeah, I agree that you'd hate to throw the entire, you know, the whole thing voted down because of housing. You know, there's a lot of good things in there. It's a real nice vision for Route 1. Something's not going to happen overnight, but, you know, all the other things, the landscaping, the frontage, the architectural designs, there's a lot of really good solid stuff in there. And to, you know, throw it all out because, you know, we can't put a few apartments down there would be a shame. So I think Paul's right, that we have a backup amendment, you know, we kind of have to read the room, I guess, is the... How a lawyer would say it. And then have an amendment there that if that was a deal break, we would take it out so we could go forth with everything else. And, you know, down the road, if there's a change of heart, we can always go back in the year, from a couple of years from now and revisit it or whatever.
Mr. Chairman? Is... Are we prepared to identify what Plan B would be? Plan A presumably is to have residential housing either in the entire corridor or including all these intersections. But to reference what Paul was just talking about, to pare down the amount of the major intersections, like the Dean Street intersection or the one of Everett Street or whatever, where are we in actually identifying what that Plan B would look like? Are we... Paul, what are your thoughts on that?
So we really haven't had a lot of time to discuss this, and this is the first time that I've had the conversation with the full board. I've talked to some of you individually offline, but I wanted to get this out there for you to all think about. The other option is we just let it go forward and take a risk with whichever option we want to and let it be voted on. And if it's not approved, we could make that change and eliminate it entirely and come back to town meeting in the spring with a revised version. There is a provision in state law in Chapter 48, the Zoning Act, which doesn't allow a planning board to come back within two years with the same amendment if it's been denied. However, by removing all references to multifamily housing, I think would be considered a significant change to the bylaw amendment, and we could bring it back at the following town meeting. So that's like a fourth option, is we just go forward and see what happens. But I really think the board needs to be ready to commit to and defend whichever option the board decides it wants to go forward with.
And with regard to multifamily properties, is there some discretion or discussion as to what types of properties would be constructed? I would imagine there's a varying likely response from residents as to larger units with multiple bedrooms that could bring families in, which would impact the school system in a large and sudden manner, as opposed to smaller units that like young professionals might rent. Can we insert or inject some sort of clarification or instruction as to what type of apartments or units would be permitted?
I think that we do have the ability to somehow limit the size of the units in terms of bedrooms and/or square footage. And that's something that we can discuss with our consultant. You know, you bring up a point which is a common argument of many people that are concerned with overloading the school system with additional schoolchildren from these types of developments. We've looked at this and studied it, and these types of developments do not produce as many schoolchildren as most people think. But having said that, they still do generate some additional schoolchildren that need to be educated, and, you know, those are associated impacts with these types of developments. So I can talk to Ted about that.
Great.
Anything else?
I just wanted to respond to Ernie's comment about, you know, more his concern is aesthetics of how these developments would look. Right now, Norwood does not have the tools available to, in a strong way, control the appearance of any commercial or residential buildings. Many communities have design review boards. And when I drive through Westwood Station, I look at the buildings and think they did a really good job with the appearance of how these buildings looked that are in that area. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that Westwood does have design review where, you know, somebody has to go through that process and have professional architects peer review and comment on the way buildings look. And right now, Norwood is not positioned to do that. The only way that we could facilitate changes to a building's architectural design would be with the planning board, in this case, or maybe in other cases with the zoning board, getting into the nuts and bolts of architecture. And, you know, we've tried, I've tried to do it a little bit, but I'm not an architect and I don't, I'm not that knowledgeable to be able to have a higher level of discussion about building architecture. But I just kind of wanted to point out to the board that it is one of the things that many other communities have that we don't have in Norwood, that it adds to the development review and approval process, the time and effort involved, but it can result in more attractive buildings. So I want to just kind of leave this, these items with you to think about. And when we have our focus discussion at the next meeting with Ted, I want to make sure that any questions you have, you're prepared for that, and we can get into a final detailed discussion as we get closer to the town meeting. The last article is one that... This is the one I'm probably most excited about that we've been working on for the last several years with the engineering department. As many of you know, right now, Norwood's zoning map is a black and white piece of paper. That map has been, you know, scanned so people can zoom in on it that way if they have a digital version of it. But the map is very confusing, it's difficult to read, and it's very outdated. Most communities that have already established geographic information systems already have digital zoning maps. We've worked with the engineering department for the last three or four years on this and working with a consultant, CAI, we've been able to come up with a proposed new digital zoning map. Pat was really helpful when we got towards the end of the project. He had a good feeling for the presentation and the colors used in the key. And we've come to a final product that we're looking at now. I'm gonna, if you zoom in really tight on the map, what you'll notice is that the base map for the zoning map is the parcel layer, which shows each individual lot in town. Right now, our zoning map does not have that. And so it can be very difficult to try to determine whether a property is in one district or another because the actual property lines don't appear on the current zoning map. And so that was one of the first major changes to the map, was to add that in. This map incorporates all of the current overlay districts, shows them in color. And what it also enables us to do is, in concert with the town's geographic information system, we are now able to do queries on of our zoning map to ask questions like, how many acres are in the manufacturing zone? And with the digital zoning map, we can get answers to very basic questions like that. How many acres are in general business or residential? So we're pleased to be able to have this ready to go, and we're hoping that the voters will adopt it. Be glad to answer any questions about it. All right. Hearing none is good. So we're ready to put this on the board. Mr. Chairman, I just have a few status report items I'd like to go over with the board, if you'd like.
Okay, yes, please, Paul.
All right. So the board will recall that we have been having difficulties getting Campanelli Company to do the plans to signalize the intersection of Planning Fields Road and Route 1A, Upland Road. We've met with state officials trying to get MassDOT officials to enforce their own permit requirements, which require Campanelli to pay for the design and the construction of that new intersection. The state did exercise some... The state did exercise some control over Campanelli regarding a permit that they were seeking in another town, and MassDOT recommended to the MIPA unit that that project should not be approved in another town because they had not fulfilled their their obligations in the town of Norwood. That and some pressure from town council seems to have gotten Campanelli's attention. And last week, we saw some emails between MassDOT and us indicating that Campanelli had contacted them and that they had also contacted VHB and asked VHB to begin work on designing that intersection. So it appears that that the pressure that we've been applying to Campanelli is working. However, I put the question to town council, Dave DeLuca, this morning, asking him whether we should go forward with our show cause hearing regarding the violations, the conditions of approval imposed by the planning board over the years, and he said, yes, go ahead and advertise the hearing and continue to go forward, and we can always cancel that agenda item if if we've received a bona fide commitment from Campanelli to do that intersection. So today, I wrote that public hearing notice, Pat got it into the paper, was scheduled to have a show cause hearing on the 19th of October to ask Campanelli to explain why they failed to comply with conditions of approval of a definitive subdivision in 2004, why they failed to comply with a modification to that subdivision approval in 2009, requiring them to signalize the intersection, and why they failed to comply with special permit conditions for the UTI building some years later. So we're going ahead with that hearing, but the good news is we seem to be making some progress with Campanelli.
Thank you.
The next the next item is Forbes Hill, and you may recall that there's been a legal complaint filed by the other bidders contesting the the bid from Continental. A judge initially ordered an injunction on the town for moving forward with the sale of the property, the Continental. That was appealed, and a new judge has affirmed the injunction imposed by the first judge. So the bid protest, it has stalled the sale of the Forbes Hill property. I don't know anything more beyond that, what the selectmen are planning to do, but last week's news was not good news that that injunction had been affirmed by a second We are having a meeting with the leasing agent for the Space Center. We've had a couple of meetings with him, one meeting related to an interest to build mixed-use development in one of the existing hollow buildings at the Space Center. A building to the rear of the site, which you can see when you enter, a brick-faced building, it has no roof, it just has four walls, and they're proposing to redevelop that building to do mixed use with commercial on the first floor and residential above. They may be moving ahead with that, they're they're looking at their options for that at this point in time. I'm also scheduled to have a meeting, I think, tomorrow with them to talk about leasing space to somebody for the main unit in the front of the building. That could be a site plan review application coming in front of the board in the near future. At this point in time, I think it's still kind of preliminary so that they don't really want it to be discussed in public, but there is some movement towards a new tenant, and I think attractive one, leasing out the the major space, the end cap of the building at the Space Center. For anyone watching at home, I do want to remind folks that we currently have two grant programs that are available for people that have been suffering economic impacts related to the pandemic and the recession that followed. We have a housing grant that can provide housing assistance to people that are having trouble paying their rent or mortgage. If they are income qualified, they can apply for grant funds of up to $4,000. There's information on the housing grants on the planning department's webpage. The other great program that we're continuing to work out is the micro enterprise grant program where income-eligible businesses can apply for grant funds for up to $10,000 if they demonstrate that they've suffered economic impacts related to the pandemic. Information on that grant program is also available at the planning department's website. The last time we checked, there was about half a dozen applications the beginning of last week. Pat, do you have any, have you seen any updated numbers on the number of applications?
I think we had, I think we had 10 on the 24th that had submitted correctly filled out applications. So the the first round actually ended last last Friday, the 25th. Joe Collins, if any of you are familiar, works in the manager's office, and he's been kind of the the main point of contact between with the the working group involved with the the grant application. And coming talking to him, I believe they are going to do a second round, or they're projecting doing a second round. So if you remember, this was, we were one out of 23 towns that applied as a regional application, so the application was written and it's being managed by Massachusetts Growth Capital Corporation, MGCC, and so there, you know, we're pretty much just the middleman, we're just trying to get the information out there, but we're not really the ones that are in charge of the application or wrote the application. So hearing back from them, I mean, there's been a good amount of people that have had have applied from from our town and neighboring towns, but I believe they, it's kind of a learning opportunity for them as well. So I think there was some, you know, some issues here and there, and so I think they'll be ready to do a second round and be able to correct any problems that they have found before, so.
Thanks, Pat. Just a couple more items. Last week, we did have a stakeholder's meeting on the Route One zoning bi law amendments. We had about 17, 18 people participate. They were property owners and business operators on Route One and a couple of familiar attorneys to the board that that often represent people for applications along Route One. The stakeholder meeting went pretty well, and we were pleased with with the turnout. We are scheduled to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night. The meeting starts at 7:00. We have not been getting access information, the login to select meetings until pretty much right up before the meetings. And so I want to ask you all to to check your email tomorrow afternoon, and we will send you that link as soon as it's made available to us. Ted Brovitz is going to do the same the same presentation that he did at the stakeholder meeting last week, and we'll we'll be interested in seeing what the selectmen's questions and concerns are related to the proposed zoning amendments. And I think that we might get some some direction from the selectmen regarding the issue that we just finished discussing on allowing residential on Route One. So we hope they can make it for the selectmen's meeting tomorrow night, and we're eager to see what the selectmen's reaction is to our proposed zoning amendments. The last item I have, Mr. Chairman, is that over the last week, we have received three letters of interest and resumes from associate planning board candidates, and some of those candidates are on the meeting tonight, and Pat gave them a suggestion to to join a meeting and watch what happened to help them decide whether or not they were interested in being on the board, and so we've got a few of them with us tonight. We are in the process of scheduling a time on a future agenda for the board to meet with those individuals and interview them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Patrick?
Do we, so also on the agenda is the possibility of setting a second meeting in October. But we with the holiday, Columbus Day, we we don't follow our regular pattern, which is why we only have that one meeting on October 19th. So I didn't know if the board wants to set up kind of a placeholder meeting for the 26th, just if there's any scenario where we we can't get through our all our special permit, I mean, our special permit, our our zoning board, geez, our zoning amendments on the 19th, if the 26th as a kind of a spill-over date. So just my suggestion.
Patrick, do we know the date yet of?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We have a date yet for the fall town meeting?
So we have a very unofficial kind of temporary date of November 12th, that's kind of the only date we've been given, but I know it's not official yet, so I think that's November 12th. But that that's, so that's kind of what we're working off of.
Paul, do you think it's a good idea to set up that placeholder meeting schedule?
Yeah, I I think it's a good idea. With 10 zoning amendments, I think we're going to be busy from now until, you know, the 12th of November, just making tweaking them, making sure that we're comfortable with all of them. So I would recommend that we schedule that meeting. In the event that we're all good and we don't need to have it, we can cancel it.
Very good. Anything else?
If the board does want to have that meeting, I to set that date, and then we can put it on a webpage, we'll know we have a meeting scheduled for that day.
Okay. Can I get a motion that that October 19th date, 7:00 PM for a planning board meeting?
October 26th?
I'm sorry. Six. At 7:00 PM, at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion, it works for me.
Okay, and got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Joe. Mr. Petrykowski?
Aye.
The Hatchey?
Aye.
And the chairman says aye, so we have 5-0 vote to move to that 26th of October. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before I look for a motion to close this evening's meeting?
Actually, can I just clarify, tomorrow's selectmen, the joint meeting, is Zoom or is it in person? For some reason, I thought it was in person.
So we will be calling in via go-to meeting. The, yeah, yeah, so the the selectmen, I believe, are meeting in person, but due to the room confinements, we can't all be there, so we'll assess the planning board, and Paul and Ted and myself will be will be using go-to meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? I got a motion to close this evening's meeting.
Make a motion to close.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, unanimous, on the roll. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Mr. Petrykowski?
Aye.
The Hatchey?
Aye.
The chairman is aye as well, 5-0. Okay, good night.
Good night.